Good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome you here to the meeting of the Minnehaha County Commission. I'll call the meeting to order with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, just a couple of business items. If you have your cellphone with you, please check and turn it off, or the sound off anyway. There are at least listening devices available if needed from Carol Muller or Tyler Clatt. The meeting documents are available for review as you enter the room, and there's also a sign in there if you plan to speak during public comment. We'd appreciate it if you would sign in. With that, I'd consider a motion to approve the consent agenda. Whoops, sorry. I would consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved. Second?
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is, I'd consider a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move for consent agenda approval.
Second.
Motion in a second. Roll call vote, please.
Bennigan.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Bender. Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. So this is our opportunity for public comment. If there's anyone here for public comment, this is your opportunity to come forward. See no movement forward. All right, we'll move on to regular business. First item is a public hearing for rezoning number 22-05 to consider an amendment to the 1990 revised zoning ordinance. Mason, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mason Stephan Planter from the Minnehaha County Planning Department. So this item was before you last week, so I'll just kind of do a brief summary. So this rezoning request is to rezone approximately 35 acres from the A1 agricultural district to the rural residential district. The property is located west of Interstate 29 at the Baltic exit. Currently, the north portion of the property is zoned rural residential for the Coachman's Manor mobile home park, and this rezoning request would rezone the remaining portion of that property for that mobile home park. This item has been before the Planning Commission at their May 23 meeting, and at that meeting, the Planning Commission voted to recommend denial with a vote of three to two. Like I said, this item did have its first public hearing last week at the June 21 County Commission meeting, and at that time, the Board did defer action to today in order to allow the petitioner time to consult with legal counsel. So with that, I'll just go over a brief overview of the property again. So as you can see here, here's the south portion of the property, to the south of that current mobile home park, and you can see the wetland on the south part as we discussed last time. So the water source protection area does go over that south part where the current sewage disposal pond is. So that was one concern that was brought up at the Planning Commission and at the County Commission last week. Here is the access at the north end of the property. This is the only access to the property, and there was some concern brought up last week about buses and trucks at this intersection and the potential for adding more traffic at this one access point. To the west here, you can see the branch off, the access branching off towards the Paul Sunderman Manufacturing, and that is the person who brought up the issue with the buses. And then off to the west there, the rest of the access kind of snakes through the property. Here is the Paul Sunderman Manufacturing, just to give for reference, this is off of the access into the property, so they do use the same access. Here is a little bit farther down on the property where that is actually requesting to be rezoned. You can kind of see it slopes down and is a little bit of a wetland area there, and the sewage disposal pond would be at the very far end of this picture. Here's looking a little bit more to the southwest where the crop plant, where a majority of the new mobile homes would be, excuse me. And then if we scroll down to the last picture, here's the access currently that would connect the two mobile home parks. So this one would definitely have to have some sort of improvement because right now it's just kind of a dirt trail. And the last thing I will mention is that this would not be the last sort of request the petitioner would have to make in order to have the mobile home park. This rezoning would just rezone it to rural residential zoning district, and a mobile home park is a conditional use in the rural residential district. So the petitioner would need to submit a conditional use permit application to the Planning Department, and it would be at that time where they'd have to submit drainage plan, lot way out, roadway out. That's where all of that would be addressed. With that, the Board of County Commissioners may vote to approve or deny the proposed zoning ordinance, which is ordinance 1617522. If you have any questions, I'm available.
Any questions? Commissioner Karski.
Approving it for rural residential, does that open it to any type of residential structures? Or is, I know the intent right now is for a mobile home park, but it doesn't create eligibility's or anything like that, does it?
No, but in the rural residential zoning district, there wouldn't be eligibility's. So yes, potentially, they would, for each acre, there would be a potential building site because that is how it is in the rural residential district, and they could do that with stick-built homes without a conditional use permit if they planted those off.
How many acres are here?
Approximately 35. As you can see, about half of it is that water, wetland slough, so probably you might be able to get 12 if you did.
So you could be opening it up for 12?
You could potentially, yes, if they decide to change their plan.
Okay.
Other questions? All right, this is a public hearing, so this would be the opportunity for proponents to speak.
Hello, my name is Glenn Boomsma. I'm an attorney, and I do represent Northeast Investments LLC. I brought with me today Nicholas Johansson. He's a civil engineer. He's going to give information and details as far as the water source protection area, how we're looking preliminarily at a mobile home layout, and how we're thinking we can address some of the issues brought up by the county. The first issue that I'd like to address would be the access. Access was brought up at the prior hearing, brought up again today. One thing that I believe will alleviate the access concerns is the fact that the access to the existing mobile home park is on the north side, obviously, and it comes off onto that Highway 114. The fact that there's an interstate exchange there as well, I believe, will alleviate any sort of congestion that may build up. It's also gonna, in my mind, make sure that there's no traffic backup. We've got a major highway to the north, we've got an interstate exchange. The other thing that I'd like to tell the county is that Northeast Investments has been talking to a property owner to the west of the existing Coachman Manor mobile home park. Why is so that we can see if there's a possibility of buying a smaller parcel, five, six acres, from him in hopes of potentially adding another access point to this park? Now, that access point, like I mentioned, would be to the west of the existing park, and it would come off of that Highway 114. We know that that's not a done deal. We don't have an agreement reached with that landowner, but we're sure trying, and that surely is something that we're gonna address, not something that's being ignored. The other thing I'd like to add to the county is that I'm a real estate attorney, and so my client tail base consists of people who own apartment buildings, mobile home parks, things like that. The reason I bring this up is that my client base owns roughly 5,000 apartment units, and the mobile home parks I represent, there's about seven or eight of them. Collectively, they have about 1,800 mobile home spaces. There is a need for affordable housing here in Sioux Falls and also Minnehaha County. With the mobile home parks that I represent, I can tell you that of the total of roughly 1,800 spaces, there's two vacancies. Two vacancies. I confirmed that yesterday and also last week. They're all full. There just is nothing available. Then as far as the 5,000 apartment units that my clients own, their vacancy rate right now is averaging about 1%. 1%. I know that there are families waiting four, five, six months on a waiting list just to get a rental unit, just to get that. They're in limbo. My point being is that there's this real need for affordable housing. The other thing that comes to mind is, obviously, we've got the businesses on the north side of town. We've got the Amazon Center, we've got that windshield cold storage unit, other businesses moving in, but I think that this park expansion would be a real attribute and a real need that we could fill in terms of affordable housing. The water source protection area, that's huge. We know about that. We're very mindful of that. Mr. Johansson's gonna speak to that. It's been identified on the map, and we know we want to keep that pond out of there. The park expansion would require a pond. There's an existing pond that services Coachman Manor. Roughly, there's about 55 to 60 spaces in the existing mobile home park. It's serviced by that existing pond. That existing pond will need to be replaced. Our proposal is to put the new pond to the north of that water source protection area. There's a diagram prepared by Mr. Johansson, and I believe that that colored diagram was circulated to the Commission before the hearing started. Am I right? So the diagram we're talking about is obviously the one on the board already, but then, more importantly, would be the second page of that diagram, and it does show the placement and layout of this new pond that would be needed. The third page of the colored diagram shows sketching as far as proposed layout of any mobile home spaces. We know more work would be needed. We're early on in the phase, and we know that if we get to the conditional use permit phase, yes, we're gonna present very detailed concept and development plans for the county to look at. Right now, we're presenting a very feasible plan, and we're being mindful of things like the water source protection area, the best use of the property, access to the property, things like that. I want to speak a little bit, too, about the existing park, Coachman Manor. Like I mentioned, it has about 55 to 60 spaces. Northeast Investments has been very proactive in terms of making improvements at that park. Specifically, the improvements we're talking about would be improvements to the road. We've got tree upgrades, we've got electrical upgrades, sewer line upgrades, and these upgrades have taken place from the timeframe of 2019 to present. In fact, most of these upgrades have taken place in the last just year, year and a half. All totaled, Northeast Investments has stuck and invested $95,000 into that existing park. It's a nice place. It's a nice mobile home park, and we're thinking the expansion would be a great attribute to what's already there, and I think it's telling and significant to this Commission that, all right, the current property owner cares enough about the current park where he's adding money to it. He's making improvements, and he's making sure that this is not a dump. He's very proud of that property, and it would be well-served by an expansion. I do believe that there's a gentleman here today by the name of Robert Delaney. Why that person came is just to tell the Commission about the upgrades to the roads. That was huge. I know it was brought up at the May 23 meeting as far as, okay, what are the existing roads like? Are they like hunting trails? Are they accessible? Are they paved? Things like that. They look very nice, and they are paved, and we did do that resurfacing, and if you want to hear from Mr. Delaney, I believe he's here. I'm gonna close by saying that I would like the county to be mindful that this is not the conditional use permit phase. We know we've got a lot of hoops to jump through, a lot of questions to answer. We need to provide some detailed sketches, concept plans, development plans, things like that. We'll be prepared to do that. We're gonna make sure that this would be a nice-looking, presentable mobile home park. The existing park already looks nice, but this expansion would be a great asset to the county, and it would fill that need of affordable housing. The other thing that the county was presented was a June 7, 2022, report from Earhart Griffin and Associates. The reason I presented that is just to give the county some idea of the thought that we're putting into this. We're not going at this willy-nilly, and we realize that probably our biggest challenge is this sewage pond. Okay? This June 7 report outlines in details to the county exactly, all right, well, where does the pond need to be? What's the depth? What's the size? How far does it need to be from houses? How about communities? How about from farm sites? We know those are things, those are criteria we're gonna have to address, and we'll be prepared to do that. We're prepared today, but we know the burden doesn't end today. We'll address this more later, but we've enlisted the help that we've needed in terms of engineers to address things like that pond. And quite honestly, a new pond at this mobile home park is gonna be a big improvement from what's already there. What's already there in terms of the pond is nothing special, but a new pond is gonna provide better measures in terms of odor control, anything in terms of obnoxious sites. It's gonna be a better pond, lot better pond that'll serve the community. Does the Commission have any questions for me on anything?
Any questions?
Yes. Mr. Barth?
So I like the way that you're talking, but once we approve this, where's our guarantee that these improvements will happen? Additionally, I have a concern that with only one entrance into this area, I know the city of Sioux Falls doesn't allow 60 houses to be served by one entrance. I mean, potentially, you could have a school bus rollover at the entrance and a heart attack on the south end of the property. And so, and what about the idea of pumping this sewage to another waste treatment facility?
I'm gonna let Mr. Johansson talk about the sewage questions, the pond questions. He's gonna be much more tuned in to the details like the pumping or anything like that. I just know that we've brought him in, and we're looking at everything that needs to be addressed about the pond. Mr. Barth, you brought up questions about the access. One thing that we're gonna do as far as the access is that with any expansion area, we're gonna make sure that there are two roads, connecting roads, that connect up with the existing park. That'll be very helpful in terms of, all right, cutting down on the congestion, making sure that there's more than one way to get to the south end of the expansion area. And then, like I already mentioned, we've got that main access point to Highway 114 to the north. We also have the interstate exchange. Something that we're gonna address more at the conditional use permit phase is whether we can get that second access off to the west from that landowner. That would be a big deal. We realize that, but even if we don't obtain that, there's ways that we can control traffic and make sure that there are no problems that are gonna come up like you talked about. Then you address the improvements. Well, how do we know these improvements are gonna continue to be made? My client is proud of this property, and he's already shown through his efforts, through his actions, that he's willing to put money into this. He put $95,000 into the park in the last year and a half in the way of streets, trees, sewer, lighting, electrical. That's just something he's gonna commit to do. And if we get down the road and the county thinks, well, we're at the conditional use permit, and we don't like how the park is looking, they can address that then with the owner at that time, but the commitment I can give you now is that the current owner is continually gonna make improvements, has made improvements, and there's many more to do. We like this park, and my client's very proud of it.
Any other questions? Commissioner Bennigan?
It seems to me like there's a lot of changes that are frankly based on the fact that you're hoping that you're gonna be able to purchase that five or six acres of property. You've got groundwater issues, you've got sewage issues, pumping water to ponds. How's that gonna be addressed if you don't get those five or six acres?
We'll be able to address those issues without getting those five or six acres. The five or six acres would be solely to get that access point to the west. We don't think that that access point to the west is essential, but it would be helpful, and we're gonna try and get that. But as far as the pumping and the pond and the street issues, those all we'll be able to do, whether we would get the five or six acres or not. There's the water source protection area. We're gonna guard that. We know that that's sacred area. No pond is going in on that area, and we're gonna place the mobile homes in such a way that it's gonna be conducive and close to the pond. That's gonna reduce the amount of pumping. And like I said already, we're gonna have the two access or connecting roads going to the north that connect up with the already existing Coachman Manor.
Commissioner Karski.
You good with the answer? Okay. Honestly, I'm on the fence with this one. I could go either way. The access road, I understand that, but it does come onto a state highway right next to the interstate. I don't think another, I mean, sorry, county highway, not a state highway. Putting another access there is necessarily the safest thing to do because of the higher traffic speeds. Granted, they are slowing down as they come up to the interstate. I am glad to see that the existing lagoon would be removed with this horse water protection.
Yes.
What I'd like somebody to convince me of is that mobile homes or any homes around another lagoon is gonna work. Do people want to live around a lagoon?
There's an existing pond already, and it doesn't present a problem. And like I said, there's about 55 to 60 homes out there. There are no smell issues, it's not unsightly, and it looks like a normal pond. But a new pond out there would function better than what's there already. We're still gonna have the nice living conditions where there's not gonna be that smell, it's not gonna be unsightly, and quite frankly, if it's much bigger than the pond that's already there, it would be not much bigger, minimally bigger. Here's why I say that. A new pond is gonna work more efficiently. Secondly, as far as this expansion area, preliminarily, what we're looking at in terms of the number of spaces being added is roughly, roughly in that 55 to 60 spaces, maybe 50, somewhere in there. So my point in bringing that up is, we're not looking at adding something to the tune of 110, 150, or even 200 spaces to the south. If that was the case, well, that does raise additional questions as far as the new sewage pond. It's gonna have to be bigger. Or are there gonna be placement issues? But as far as what we're looking at for expansion, we feel that that pond has a very feasible spot. It's out of the water source protection area. It'll be an upgrade to what's there, and it's not gonna be unsightly. There already is a pond, but this one's gonna be better.
Does a pond have to be fenced?
Can you repeat that?
Is there a requirement for a sewage lagoon to be fenced?
Fenced. I'm not sure on that, and that's why I brought the pro with me. He's gonna speak more about the pond. He's researched that. That's beyond my expertise, and I know that that's something he's specifically looked into. My hunch is there would be a requirement. Mr. Johansson will tell you that.
I'd like to hear about that.
Yes.
The one thing I didn't say is, one of the reasons I'm supporting this in my mind is the fact that it is housing and affordable housing and workforce housing, close to where the need is, and to me, it makes sense on that level. So I'd like to hear more about the wastewater.
Agreed. Let's do that.
Any other questions? I have one question for you.
Absolutely.
I'm also very interested in hearing about the lagoon and am very supportive of affordable housing, but I feel like there's some real definite concerns about, and a lot of unknowns yet, about the proposal. I'm curious why you need us to rezone this right now when there are so many unknowns out there. Could you wait until you have a much more solid plan, a much better plan, and then come in and ask for the rezoning?
Couple of answers to your question. One thing is economics. For one thing, if we wanted to prepare more detailed, more comprehensive concept plans, it's very expensive. We know we're gonna have to do that, but this is step one, and we're gonna have to address those concerns at the CUP phase. Right now, it's our argument that this is feasible. It makes good sense. It fills a need for housing in that area. And then, the county's not done with us. We'll come back at that conditional use permit. Parameters are gonna be set. Detailed concept plans are gonna be studied. We'll show a development plan as far as exact placement of everything. The pond will be addressed more. We're mindful, we've gotta address all those things, but at this phase, the rezoning makes sense, and I think we've met our burden.
I'm not sure I agree with you on that. I have one other question, and this may go to Mr. Johansson. You mentioned, you know, one of Commissioner Karski's questions also greatly concerns me is whether it's good affordable housing to have all these housing units surrounding a sewage lagoon. You made the point that there is one there now. Well, it's quite a ways away from the existing housing, and your plan has the housing completely surrounding it, and I'm curious and worried about children playing in the area and all those kinds of things, so perhaps that's a question for Mr. Johansson.
I think it would be, and I think one of the concerns to look at is, well, okay, is there gonna be fencing around the pond? And I think Mr. Johansson's gonna tell you that, yes, definitely, there would be. Also, there's other buffer things that can be used, such as trees, and we can look at the idea of placement of that pond in a different location as well. The location that's identified on the colored diagram, I don't believe that that's the sole location that the pond can be placed at. There's also possibility for placement to the south. This is a larger parcel. It's about 35 acres in size, so we've got some room to work with, and we're not dead set as far as where things must be or how the placement of the home spaces have to be. We just know that it's feasible. We've given it a lot of thought, and I'll let you open your questions up to Mr. Johansson about the pond.
Okay, thank you.
Good morning. I'm Nick Johansson. I'm at 5716 East Retto. I'm with Earhart Griffin and Associates. I've been an engineer in Sioux Falls for over 20 years, and I'd be happy to answer your questions. I think maybe I'd address just a couple things before I take your questions. Have you been provided with this exhibit in particular as well?
Did you give them this exhibit?
This one? Okay. I don't know if I can pass this out to you quick, but it's just a, it's just a brief, okay, it's just a general idea and a general look at it. This is another pond that we did for a project in Iowa, but it's a similar type of a setup that you're gonna have, except this one has an additional secondary cell. So this would be the type of layout that we would have. We would have a larger primary cell and a secondary cell that would outlet into that creek and that drainage area to the east.
We're upside down.
Right now. Oh, there you go. Sorry. So yeah, so that is generally what a plan would look like when we went through the entire process with the state of South Dakota, and they have very And they have very, very specific regulations and detailed design considerations when you're doing a pond like this. So it's not something that I'm coming up with. There's a very, very detailed set of standards that we have to adhere to. So this is just one example of what it might look like. Our pond is going to end up being quite a bit smaller than this one, but you can kind of get the idea of what it's going to look like. As far as what Glenn said, I appreciate what he said. He covered it very, very well. But he's right. There is, if you look on the third page of the letter that you were provided to by Airheart Griffin, those two locations for the pond, one is on the south side and one is in this location that we've been discussing most of the time. But there is a possibility that we could put that pond on the south end there. It's just going to require some additional infrastructure to gravity-feed the sewer towards that wetland area and pump it across the creek. That does present some design challenges to get to that, to get to that, this one right here. Does, this one here, this is the south end of the property. This is the area that we have just been talking about, north side of it. So it does present some design challenges getting to that south side of the creek. There will be probably some additional permitting, wetland permitting and things like that. But all these things that surround the lagoon, that surround this septic system or sewer system, will go through a very, very detailed design process, and we're held to a very, very specific design standards from the state of South Dakota and just engineering general guidelines. So it's something that, as the project moves along, we can figure out what the best solution is, one for the community, one second for this site, and just in general. So I guess I'd be happy to take any further questions you have about that.
Commissioner Barth?
So what about connecting to a municipal sewer system?
Obviously, that would be the easiest thing to do, and that would be what we would want to do. But to try to get our sewer from this location, and I think the closest community would be Baltic, I mean, it's just, it's cost prohibitive. You know, it's just, I don't think it's really something that we could look at doing, honestly.
Other questions? Commissioner Bennega?
Just one additional question. Your last point in the areas of concern says the size of the pond is prohibitive to the proposed number of units.
Where do you see this at?
It's on the last page.
Of the, of the letter?
Yep.
Oh, he's, yeah. So when we look at, if you look at the concept layout I gave you, and I had a conversation with Terry this morning before I showed up here, just to go through a couple of things that I had. Terry's kind of the expert. I'm a civil engineer. This isn't my expertise, but he is a specific lagoon person, and that's why he wrote the letter. But this, this lagoon at five acres is designed for, as you can see in the letter, for 200 units.
Right.
Now, we're not going to get to 200 units. We're going to get to maybe 120 total units with the existing park and the new park. So the size of this lagoon might be reduced to around three acres, reduce 60%. So we're going to try to fight the balance, and when he says cost prohibitive, he means units for the cost of the entire development. So if you spend, I'm just going to throw a number out there, you spend $2 million on a lagoon, and you can only develop 40 lots, then you're spreading that cost over 40 lots instead of over 200 lots. So that might make it cost prohibitive. That's what he was talking about, so.
Okay.
Other questions? So I had the question about the fencing.
Sure.
Can you talk about that?
Yes, I think, I think, I don't know the specific state statute that calls off for fencing, but this pond will have fencing around it. I believe it's required by the state of South Dakota. We've worked in several different states, but the state of South Dakota, I believe, requires it. Regardless of that, my recommendation to the client would be to put fencing around this, just because of the simple fact that you have likely a lot of children in this park, and just for the simple safety of the lagoon system to have a fence around it. So, yes.
Commissioner Karski.
Not, maybe not a question for you, sir, but our planning office, would fencing be a condition that we could, okay, I see heads nodding, so, and the CUP process, that would be a condition that we could put on it? Okay, thank you.
So obviously, we haven't had much time to try to absorb the information in this letter, but just by glancing at it quickly, it appears to me that they list some fairly significant challenges.
Absolutely.
Are in front of you guys.
Yes, absolutely. And these are all, these are all things that, like I said, will be handled as we go through the process. I mean, rezoning is just one. Once we have, once we get, once we get it rezoned, then we're going to have to go through the condition use process and look at a more detailed plan. How many units can we get on this site when we avoid the water source protection area? How large is the pond, generally speaking? And just lay these things out, and at that point, we're going to be doing a cost analysis of how much is this going to cost, and does it make sense for the client to continue as well? I mean, there's all kinds of factors that are going to be in play as we go through this process of engineering a site. And that's typical. When we do any subdivision in Sioux Falls, you know, we go through rezone, we go through, you know, annexation, rezone, preliminary plans, development engineering plans, construction plans, and I think that's just the general path of a project, and I think this one is going to follow the same kind of path. So we can figure these things out, figure out what the roadblocks are, figure out what the best plan of action is to solve these concerns that you have, and they're legitimate concerns, and I have them as well, so.
All right, anything else?
Madam Chair, we've got some articulate presenters here. I just, I wonder, we're talking about this as low income. What are the rents in this area?
I don't know.
Do we know? There's a fellow raised his hand in the back there, but.
Your question was, what are the rents in this area?
Yeah.
Okay. The rents in this area are going to be in that range of roughly 330 a month per lot, all the way up to maybe as high as 380 a month per lot. It's typical that at a mobile home park, that tenant is going to be responsible for the utilities as well, their own utilities.
And so.
So significantly lower than the apartment.
Does the owner, does the occupant own the trailer, or is it owned by the developer?
With the parks that I represent, in 98% of the instances, the person who occupies the mobile home owns the mobile home. And in fact, that's a requirement in almost every park that I represent. It just doesn't work well if the occupier of the mobile home doesn't own the mobile home. It's a much, much better situation because at least then you've got the occupier that can take some pride in owning something. They're going to take better care of it. There's other reasons, but that's typically how it works.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you. So this is a public hearing, and if there's anybody opposed to this product or project, this would be your opportunity to come forward. Anybody opposed? Send it to the commission then.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barth.
I'd like to ask staff a question on this.
Absolutely.
Maiten or Scott, this property is grandfathered in at this point and probably could not have been created out of whole cloth today. Isn't that right?
Yes. So the mobile home park existed before density zoning and our zoning regulations. So in the 1980s, it was, the north part was rezoned real residential to reflect what was already there, to make it conforming. But yes, it went to, so since it existed before, it was grandfathered in. Same with the sewage pond that is in the water source protection area. That was before, so it was grandfathered as well.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Karski.
Another question for you. If this commission decides that we want more information and we are deny it today, how much time would have to pass before they could bring it back?
So it'd be six months from today. So they'd be able to apply, I suppose, probably January of next year would be the first month they'd be able to get on.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? All right, I'd be looking for a motion.
I'm going to make a motion to approve, and then I have some comments.
There was another gentleman that was going to speak here today. He was a proponent, and his name is Robert Delaney, if the commission would like to hear from him. He was going to offer details in terms of the roads at the existing park.
Is anyone that would like to hear from him? The proponents had an opportunity, but, thank you. I think we're fine. I appreciate him coming, though. All right, Commissioner Karski.
I make a motion to approve. If I get a second, I have comments.
I'll second that.
Okay, comments?
It's interesting. I'm glad to hear there's no neighborhood objections to this, but there's not much of a neighborhood out here, so it's not too surprising. This isn't a perfect plan, and I'm wondering if there's, if you went through a process with the business plan and arranging financing, I don't know if this would be enough to get a banker supporting it, but it's not complete, but definitely a work in progress. I know it's kind of fluid in, you know, what can be done and what has to be done. I do support it just because it does support the housing needs that are really critical in this community. I, you know, if people want to live around a lagoon, I guess that's up to them. It's not the judgment that I'm going to make, but that would be a choice that would be made by people. I can see where we could control a lot of what happens with the conditional, through the conditional use process. So I am supportive of moving this forward.
Commissioner Bennega?
I agree with Commissioner Karski. Rezoning is somewhat grandfathered in, if you will. I think the conditional use permit is probably going to be loaded with restrictions because it will be difficult to approve something with all these questions that have, frankly, had not been answered at this point, and I think that's going to be a significant step.
I'll support it. At the same time, I, you know, I would like to see a fence on the lagoon. I'd like to see the second outlet to the county highway, and I like the way this is trending, but what is it, trust but verify?
And I don't, I don't think I am going to support it. I am very supportive of affordable housing. My concern is that by providing this rezoning today, we immediately increase the value of this property with really no plan. That, to me, seems viable at this point. I don't see, I would have much preferred that this be brought forward with a much more vetted-out plan so we could really see it. I'm really worried about the access points and the safety involved, and I think there's a lot of, a lot of questions, a lot more questions than answers about the lagoon. So, anyway, we have a motion and a second. Commissioner Barth?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
What would be your preference, to defer, deny?
Well, I mean, I'm not sure they could come up with a plan in six months, honestly. They've got a lot of work to do. But I would have preferred that they would have waited until closer, until they had a much more vetted-out plan to come forward. So, anyway, we have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Karski.
Aye.
Bennega?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Thunder?
Uh, no. Motion passes. Thank you. That takes us to item 11.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Karski.
I just wanted to comment that I believe this commission body has made it quite clear we want to see plans, and when it comes to access, I'd like to hear from the highway department, too, at that point, to make sure that, you know, what do they support and what is safe? Maybe what we think isn't always what's correct, so just expecting a lot out of this, I guess, when it comes to the conditional use permit, so.
Good points. Thank you. Anything else before we move on? All right, that takes us to item 11, which is a public hearing to consider a declaration of the property legally described as east quarter, northeast quarter of section 11, Humboldt Township, a public nuisance. Kevin Hookman, good morning.
Good morning. I'm Kevin Hookman from the county planning department. This property has been in front of you before. Last fall, it was brought before you to consider a public nuisance as there is vehicles and junk in this dilapidated grain bin. We worked with the petitioner to largely clean up the property, and no action was taken because the vehicles were licensed or removed, the junk was cleaned up, and the grain bin was set on a trailer and ready to be hauled out. This spring, the staff was made aware that the grain bin was still on the property. And so I visited the property on April 15th, took a few photos, and you can go down through the views here. There's the property. All right, that's a, this is a view from last January and the last hearing, and then we move forward to the April photo there. So staff sent a letter that the grain bin needed to be removed and set a deadline of May 31st. I visited the property again on June 7th, and the grain bin was still on the property, as you can see in that photo there. It's no longer on the trailer. I would also note that on June 7th, I noticed that one of the barns, here's a photo of the barn, blew down in the May windstorm. At this time, I am not pursuing any sort of nuisance request on this barn, as there's plenty of other damage in the county that has not been cleaned up yet because of the recency of the storms. So right now, the only violation item that I'm requesting as a public nuisance is the grain bin. And most recently, I visited the property on June 23rd, which is last Thursday morning, and that's when I also took another photo that it was still on the property. The public nuisance ordinance does state that whatever is dangerous to human health renders groundwater, air, food or hazard, or food a hazard injury to human health is a public nuisance, along with abandoned property. South Dakota codified law 2110-6 allows Minnehaw County to declare a public nuisance and to allow the county to clean up the property and defray the cost to the property owner. So staff is requesting and recommending that Minnehaw County Commission consider the property legally described as east half, the northeast quarter, except covert sedition in section 11, Township 102 North, Range 52 West, which is Humboldt Township, a public nuisance, and enact South Dakota 2110-6. The property owner is here today, so he'd be able to speak.
All right, any questions for Kevin? All right, it's a public hearing, and so if the owner would like to come forward.
I guess, I didn't know that that's what the public nuisance thing was over, was the grain bin.
I didn't understand that.
I said all I got was I got a violation. My letter says that I got a violation.
Okay, so you're saying that you did not recognize that the grain bin was something that needed to be.
Well, we're trying to get everything cleaned up here from the windstorm. I'm working with the insurance company right now. We'll get everything out of there as soon as I can.
Any questions or comments? I mean, I was at the last hearing, and I recall that we talked about the grain bin, so I'm surprised that you didn't recognize that that was something that was requested.
I guess I didn't know that. I thought it was all over the cars, and we have not brought any cars onto the place that we're on. It's dirty.
Any other comments or questions? Okay. Is there anybody else here who would like to speak on this matter?
We don't want you to have to be here, and certainly yours is not the only grain bin blown down in our county right now, but we would like to get this cleaned up. Can you help us?
Yeah, I'm actually working with another guy here to bring an excavator on out there to get the barns cleaned up and stuff.
How much time do you think that will take?
I, I don't know yet, because like he said, he's very busy right now, so I don't have a good answer for you on time. I can get a payloader here over there sometime next week and get some of that stuff pushed around, I've gotten what I can with the skid loader moved around already and ready to get hauled out of there, so, and I'm kind of still waiting on insurance companies and stuff like that from all the damages.
Madam Chair, I, uh, I certainly see the issue, I also understand that there has been some progress. I would like to suggest that we come up with a date certain to, uh, review this issue again and, uh, insist on progress continuing to be made. Throw it out to my fellow commissioners to, uh, my birthday's October 13th, if you want to, you know.
Commissioner Karski.
Question of Kevin, if I may. If you'd let me address, thank you. Um, Kevin, I know that these issues are typically addressed on a complaint basis, and you had cited what makes it a public nuisance, can you go over that one more time for me? What makes this a, a public nuisance?
Well, um, so the public nuisance, as I read earlier, whatever is dangerous to human health, uh, there's also specifically abandoned property, deteriorated, wrecked, dismantled, derelict or inoperable property, unusable condition in its present state, uh, and I would go with, with that as the, what's making this a public nuisance. Uh, I'm actually surprised that the grain bin didn't blow away in the storm, uh, because I sent the letter in April prior to the storm. I would also note that the April 24th letter specifically mentions the dilapidated grain bin is in violation, and that the dilapidated grain bin, uh, must be removed, it doesn't mention other vehicles or things as well.
Okay. I'm with you, I'm surprised the grain bin didn't blow away. Um, question for the property owner, thank you Kevin. Is the grain bin from this property, or was it moved in from somewhere?
Uh, it's from that property.
It is, okay.
So, it's been there since I bought it in 2003.
So you've lived there now for almost 20 years, 19 years?
Yeah, just about.
And my comment to you, sir, and maybe to address Commissioner Barth, I mean, uh, how you want to live is up to you, I don't see where that's any of my business, quite honestly, until it becomes an issue of a public nuisance. Um, neighbors complaining that they're concerned for their safety and their health because something could blow away, burn down, whatever the case may be, and start causing problems on their property, so I, I'm not looking as being as lenient, I'd like to get this done ASAP, I think it's time, we've been talking about it for a long time. How much time? October seems like a long ways away to me, but, um, 90 days? I was thinking 30, but I'll leave that open to discussion among my rest of the board here. Well, I'd prefer that Jeff find a different way to celebrate his birthday, um, so I would hope that 30 days is enough time, in fact, I was thinking even less time than that, but I'll go with 30 days, and then frankly, if it's not done by then, uh, I'm done with the process.
All right, is there a motion?
So what are our choices?
I can have the grain bin out of there in 30 days.
Okay. Commissioner Karski, were you looking at planning as to what kind of motion you need to make, or?
Correct.
Okay. Scott or Kevin, can you give us some help on what kind of motion we need to make to defer this for 30 days?
Yeah, I think a, a deferral motion would be just fine, just a deferred motion, 30 days, what would that meeting date be for?
August 1st.
August 1st, is that a Tuesday?
Close.
August 2nd is be the, the meeting date, we can defer it to August 2nd?
Sure. That would be my motion, that on August 2nd, well, and I don't even know if it has to come back to us, that, um.
If it's cleaned up, it won't.
Okay.
I'll second your motion, sir.
If it's cleaned up by August 2nd, that, um, we don't have to take action to.
Right.
Clean it up, so I'd make a motion to defer to August 2nd, is that the right way?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Karski.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Bennega.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye, motion passes unanimously. Um, you can ask a question to us, or you can ask a question to the planning department? That wasn't part of this, we're just talking about the grain bin.
Okay, the grain bin can be out of there.
Perfect, great, that would make us all happy, thank you.
Okay, all right.
All right, that takes us to item 12, which is a briefing on building permit valuation and fee schedule increase, Kevin.
All right, uh, so this item is a briefing, um, the Minnehaw County recently adopted the 2021 international building codes, uh, to support the costs and implementation of the codes, uh, we have building permit fees scheduled, um, and as, based on the estimated valuation of a square foot of new residential or agricultural structures. Uh, the fee schedule is periodically updated, uh, and you can see here, there's the historical changes, it was updated 2008, 11, 13, 15, 2020, and then, uh, the proposed, uh, updates here. The updates are there to reflect the, closer to the cost of construction, as well as to increase the, uh, the fees that can be brought in for administration costs to, uh, inspect the, uh, building permits. Planning department is recommending a flat 5% increase in, in building permit valuations. This is, uh, in order to be, uh, close, but not, it doesn't quite reach inflation over the last, uh, two years, and it probably does not reach the inflation rate for, uh, the current 22 level, uh, but we can maybe address it again in another year or two. Uh, staff is, uh, projecting that the revenues to be raised on this would be approximately 7,560 to 7,888 dollars, uh, annually, and it's just the projected revenue based on the last couple of years of, uh, building permit fees. So, yeah, right here on the screen, we have the building permit for historical valuations and where it would be now, uh, and also on the right side of that chart includes the valuations on how the city of Sioux Falls evaluates their building permit fees currently, and how the Lincoln County evaluates their building permit fees. And if we can go to the next one? So for the typical, uh, single family dwelling, uh, based on the five-year average of the counties of, of how large houses are, uh, the building permit fee would go up approximately $62, according to, um, the math on what it is currently, and a 5% increase. Uh, and then a mobile home building permit fee, if a mobile home is placed in the county, would go up approximately $16. So, this is a briefing, uh, staff is recommending that, uh, a final hearing on the resolution be made on July 19th of 2022. Uh, the proposed effective date of the new schedule would be October 1st of 2022, it will allow time for contractors to adjust to the new fee schedule, uh, and other than that, I'm available for questions.
Questions for Kevin? Commissioner Karski.
It's, Kevin, are we increasing both the valuation and the fee, or is it kind of hand in hand?
It, it's hand in hand, because the fee is, uh, is calculated off of a 0.4% of the valuation.
So we're not increasing the percentage, we're just increasing the valuation amount, the percentage is staying the same?
Correct, yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. That takes us to Commissioner Liaison Reports, any liaison reports today?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barth.
Last night, we met in the same chamber, uh, with the planning and zoning, uh, and, unexpectedly, the meeting went past, slightly past 9:00 PM. We had one issue for a, uh, a hog feeding facility, which, uh, was a tie vote, and the chair had to break the tie, so it was three to two in favor of, of this hog operation. Uh, we also, uh, had a couple other issues, and, uh, they were, we had about 70 people in this room, uh, so I'm glad we had this room.
All right, we're, we are very thankful to the city for allowing us to use this room as we, um, finish up our remodel project of our chambers. Any other liaison reports? All right, um, any non-action commission discussion? If not, I'd entertain a motion to recess.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Um, we will recess for, I think, five minutes, does that work for you guys? And then we'll come back, we have a short executive session.